Good afternoon. The North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you to its virtual city council meeting this evening. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. When I call you to speak, I request that you limit your comments to more than three minutes, and they will avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Mayor, we are in compliance with the open meeting law.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the opportunity to have an invocation given by Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Isaac Barone, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Richard Churchill. Please rise.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. Right now, I'd like to make a short prayer of thanks. Normally, I make a prayer for the good Lord to, of course, bless our city and to, of course, always guide us and to impart His wisdom that this city council and that the staff can make good decisions to bring prosperity and safety to the residents of North Las Vegas and our valley. Tonight, I'd like to also thank the Lord that we have had a very peaceful transition of power at the national level. And the words that our new president, that he has spoken in terms of bringing our nation together, that people in our society, both here in our valley, in our state, and through our nation, that we hear these words, these words of healing, these words of unity and understanding. I think that the quote that he says, that because we don't agree with each other, that does not necessarily mean that we have to be enemies and that we have to be at odds with one another physically or emotionally. And I pray that the residents of our city are also guided by these words and that, again, we are guided to a new era of prosperity in this new year of 21, a year in which we find relief from this global pandemic and relief for our residents from stress and from financial pressures. We ask you, on behalf of our city, behalf of our residents and this government, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilman and Councilman for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a very special opportunity this night to present a presentation to two of North Las Vegas' finest citizens, Gaye and Steve Schoeff. They've served the city for many, many years in a lot of different varieties. They're always involved in the progress of North Las Vegas. They are two of the finest citizens that I know that we have in North Las Vegas, and they are soon moving. And I've asked Councilman Churchill to read a proclamation, and then we're going to make a presentation, because Councilman Churchill is such dear friends of this family, we thought Richard would be the perfect person.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry. Thank you for the privilege. We'll have to read it from up here, but I got the word that it's okay that you could take the actual proclamation with you. So let me start here, and hopefully, as Gaye said, I'll do it appropriately without making any flubs in the reading. Whereas it is the policy and pleasure of the city of North Las Vegas to recognize special individuals in the community such as Gaye and Steve Schoeff. And whereas Gaye and Steve Schoeff have been residents of North Las Vegas for over 16 years and have been actively involved in the betterment of the community. And whereas Gaye served on the Citizens Advisory Committee from 2007 to 2016 and has served on the Utility Advisory Board since 2010. And whereas since 2009, Steve has served on numerous boards, including the Clark County Community Advisory Committee, Traffic and Parking Advisory Community, the Yucca Mountain Nuclear Waste Advisory Committee, Parks, Art, Recreation, and Cultural Advisory Board, and has served on the Planning Commission since April 2020. And whereas Gaye and Steve are two outstanding citizens who have contributed greatly to our community, and we commend them for their numerous contributions and accomplishments. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of North Las Vegas, do hereby proclaim January 20th, 2021, as Gaye and Steve Schoeff Day in North Las Vegas, and urge all of our citizens to join us in congratulating Gaye and Steve Schoeff for their outstanding community involvement and outstanding service to our community over the years. And in sign and witness thereof, we have set our hand and called the seal of the City of the City of North Las Vegas, this 20th of January 2021. And of course, the signatures on there of Mayor John Lee, Councilman Barone, Councilwoman Goins Brown, Councilman Scott Black, and of course, myself, and attested by Ms. Canton Rayner. Thank you, Steve and Gaye.
Did you want to start? Did you say what you wanted to say?
You know, Isaac is, I believe, Councilman Barone is online, and let me just get my quick thing out of the way. You know, unfortunately for us as a city over here, I just recently had the opportunity to appoint you to planning. And, you know, I apologize for the short term, but even in the short term, I know you brought a lot of background knowledge and passion to that position, and you would have in the future, the way you've brought all of what you do, you know, to all of those other boards. And I have to say that very rarely, speaking for myself, that I communicate, not on a regular basis, but communicating with a resident who is very concerned about our city, to not just call me and complain about things, but to call and make suggestions about the things that may improve or be more beneficial to the community and to the residents. So, you know, you stand out amongst all of the other people over there. And of course, Gaye, you know how I feel about you. You're very special, known you both for many years. So I just want to end by saying we wish you well, you know, in your new life where you're going. And, you know, just don't forget about us over here, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Barone.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yeah, I think, which always, I think, couple, they're the very definition of community engagement. They engage with the community in all aspects, you know, with other social organizations. I don't know if people know this, but of course, Mr. Schoeff, of course, he was a parking guard walker. And, you know, those people, they're like angels, you know, always looking out for the safety of our very vulnerable children, you know, and pedestrians. And whenever there was a board, if they could, if you talked to them, if they were available, you know, they always made themselves available for that. And there's a lot of work that goes behind that. And again, it's very, I'm saddened that, of course, that they'll be leaving our community. All, the best thing I could say is, they definitely left our community better than when they found it. And I say that from the bottom of our heart to both Mr. and Ms. Schoeff. And they broke a mold. The mold was broken when it created the both of these. And very good luck, and you'll always have friends here in North Las Vegas. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Councilman Black.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. So when I first joined the city council in 2017, I realized very quickly that there was a gentleman who seemed to be a consistent, have a consistent presence here at the council meeting, and that happens on occasion. But one thing I did notice that set Mr. Schoeff apart is his consistent commitment to improvement in the community and his voice of reason. You take your community seriously, the needs that we have in the community, you convey them with a measure of passion and articulate them in such a way that it makes sense what you say. I try to be a good listener with the intent to learn, and sometimes it's easy to get distracted and there's noise. But there are some people that you come across in life that, when they talk, it's like, okay, I better listen to what this guy has to say. And Mr. Schoeff, you're one of those people that I feel compelled to listen closely to. And Mr. Schoeff, Gaye, had microconversations with you over the last three years, little here, little there, and I tell you what, every time I've spoken to you, I feel a personalness. I feel, just the way you, the way you speak and the words you use just make you feel like you're your longtime friend, and you, I feel better every time I talk to you, and so I'm grateful for the little microconversations I've had over these last three years to, just to feel your goodness. So thank you.
Ms. Goins Brown?
I just simply want to say thank you to both of you. There's a long history of relationship that goes back quite a few years. I appreciate that you're committed to this community. You scold us when we're wrong. You praise us when we do good, so thank you for that. You're just a beacon of light, a breath of fresh air, and I know wherever, when you go to your next community, that hopefully you are just as involved as you are here in North Las Vegas. We will miss you, and I am just glad to have gotten to know you. So thank you very much, and best of luck to you.
Thank you. And I'll end on the school traffic guard is very impressive to me, but I'm more admiring Gaye for the years she put on the, the fine oversight with about 12 people, and they gave the CBDG money out to our community and toured, went out in the community, and actually got to know some of the things that we just bode on, support, but never really see. What a great leader she was. She found a way to find somebody else to take her place equally as good as her, and that's the best sign of a leader right there. Now, Steve, in the NBA, they have a sixth man award. The guy that comes off the bench, he's the best guy in the NBA coming off the bench, and I really think that we really should give you the sixth man award. You're almost like a city council member here a lot of times, and as the council has told you, we couldn't really act on a lot of things publicly when you told us what to do, but after the meeting, the sidebars, we get things accomplished that you recognized needed to be fixed, and we appreciate that. And your vision and your support has been wonderful. When I find out what community you're going to, I'm writing the mayor a letter and telling him to make sure he invites you to the meeting to start fixing that city next, all right? Because you did good with us in North Las Vegas. So with that, I think we would just like to thank you once again. We're sorry we're in a virtual situation, but we adore and love you both. Thank you so much. Can Richard go down and give him the proclamation? Richard, you want to? We have at least a city council person. Oh, Gaye, we didn't ask you to say anything. Honestly, if you'd like to say something, the city manager's recognized that this is your moment. This is, virtual has messed us up, Gaye. We're so sorry.
We want to thank everybody for the opportunities. This has just been so much fun. We've learned so much. We've worked with so many wonderful people, both with staff, people we've served with, and it's just been a pleasure all the way around. Thank you all for the opportunities.
Thank you. Steve?
Gaye and I always wondered only what was best for the city of North Las Vegas and its citizens. That's why occasionally we might come up and say things that might brush people the wrong way, but we cared about this city and wanted to see it succeed, and we've noticed that it is succeeding, and we want to thank everybody right now. We love you all. We're going to miss you, but we're looking to some good music and good food in Louisiana, so we're out of here.
Thank you. Way to go. Hey, hey, wait, wait, hey, hey, wait, wait, wait. We're going to photobomb. We're going to photobomb.
You're going to photobomb?
Yeah.
Get over here, everybody.
Can you see us?
The back row.
Here, I will make sure to see you, Mayor. There we go. One, two, and three. We'll do one more. One, two, and three. Wonderful.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you all. We love you. Viva sopas now. I'm hungry. I'm okay.
You're going to miss Juan's flaming fajitas that are coming in in about a year.
I saw that centennial in Aliante.
Yes.
That's a year away. We'll come back.
Scott got that restaurant in there. That was great.
Thank you, everybody.
Everybody, thank you so much. We love you. Take care.
Bye-bye.
Take care of our city.
Wonderful, wonderful thing to do for our community there. Moving on to the public forum, this is a time set aside to comment only on post-agenda items. But because of this COVID, in order to provide more flexibility for the public during our virtual meetings, the public may speak on any published agenda item and non-agenda topics. Now, remember, the council can only hear these comments on non-agendized items, but we cannot take action on these tonight. Madam City Clerk, do we have any written comments or callers on the phone?
Mayor, the city received an email from Susie Vasquez from the state, Nevada State Apartment Association in regards to item 25. Ms. Vasquez asked if the city would be creating a landlord assisted program similar to the county's plan and offered to provide assistance to the city's plan if one was approved. In regards to item 19, Richard Modi submitted a letter stating he opposed the 380-unit multifamily development citing as problems increased number of vehicles and traffic, reduction in open space, lowering of property values for nearby single-family, privacy compromised, and a significant increase in water usage. He stressed that he is concerned with the cumulative effect of this development and two more proposals that are all within a few blocks of each other. And that's all the written comments we have, and we have no callers on the line right now.
Thank you. I have 12 that supported that project and four that wrote in that they were opposed to it, so that would get to that item. So there's no one else on the line, correct?
No, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're going to close the public forum, and moving on to the agenda.
Item one, approve city council regular meeting agenda of January 20th, 2021. Mayor and council, since there's no presentation for item number 23, staff recommends that that item be moved to the consent agenda for action. We also recommend moving item number 27 to the next council meeting. It's with these changes, staff recommends approval of the agenda as amended.
Great, let me write that down here. Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or questions, city manager? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Councilman Barone?
Aye. Aye.
Councilman votes aye. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda consists of items two through 13, and with item 23, staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion to remove the consent agenda as amended.
Move to approve as amended.
We have a motion. Councilman Brown, please cast your vote.
Barone, yep.
Items approved. Moving on to public hearings.
Mayor, council, item 14, approve VAC 09-2020 Commerce Washburn for applicant Beezer Homes to vacate the north of Lee, 30 feet of Rosado Way located approximately 600 feet south of Washburn Road, extending approximately 300 feet east of Commerce Street for possible action.
Thank you. Now, item 14 to 15 are related to the same subject. Do we have a presentation or a call on this one, Catherine?
Mayor, we do. Mayor, we do have a caller. I'll bring the caller into the conference.
Thank you very much.
Hello, caller. State your name and address for the record.
Mayor, I'm Mark Bangen with WLB Group.
Welcome, Mark.
I'm presenting items 14. How you doing?
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Go ahead.
Did you have anything you wanted to say on this?
I just wanted to talk about items 14 and 15. I believe you're hearing those together. If not, I can address them separately. But representing, I'm here representing Beezer Homes, and we agree with staff's conditions, and we ask for your favorable motion to approve the items.
Thank you. So that'll be your comment on item 14 and 15. Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or questions on item 14? Seeing none, the chair will take a motion.
Mayor?
Is there any public comment on this one? I did make a mistake. Is there any public comment?
Mayor Lee, we do not have any callers or written comments. We just have the one public hearing notice that was returned in support of the project.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, that's good for the vote. Counsel, shall I take a motion?
Mayor, I'll be happy to make a motion to approve item number 14.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Barone, yep.
Items approved. Item 15, we've heard the remarks on that, so I'll open up the public hearing.
Mayor, I should read that item in real quick.
Oh, you go ahead. I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you. Item 15 approves ZN 15, or 17, 2020, and pass and adopt ordinance number 3051 in ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 5.22 plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from an RE Ranch Estates District to an R1 Single Family Low Density District, ZN 17, 2020 Commerce Washburn, for property located at the southeast corner of Washburn Road and Commerce Street and providing for other matters of property related there, too.
Thank you, Mark. Not seeing you at the dais, I forgot about you. I know you're in your office on the phone, so I apologize for that.
That's fine.
So we're going to open the public hearing this time, Catherine.
Mayor, we do not have any callers, but we've received six public hearing notices back in support of the project and one in opposition.
Thank you very much. We will close the public hearing right now, and the chair will ask for a motion. Is there any comments or questions from the council on this item? The chair will take a motion then.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be happy as well to make a motion to approve item number 15.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Barone, aye.
Items approved.
Mayor, council, item 16, approve AMP 13, 2020 Tropical Four for applicant Van Trust Real Estate to request an amendment to the comprehensive master plan to change the land use designation from community commercial to heavy industrial at the northeast corner of Tropical Parkway and Castleberry Lane alignment.
Thank you. So item 16, 17, and 18, council, are all related, so if we have somebody giving a presentation, we'll consider that the presentation for those three items. Catherine, is anybody on the phone that would like, as I open up the public hearing, to discuss this presentation?
Mayor, it appears that Mr. Gronauer is on the line. I'll try to bring him into the conference.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, caller. State your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Your Honor, members of the council, good afternoon. My name is Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I am representing on item, on the exact three items, I am representing Van Trust. As all of you know who Van Trust is, they've spent a substantial amount of money in the city of North Las Vegas over the last many years, and they're excited to put together and they're assembling more property to develop more industrial developments here in the city of North Las Vegas. So two of these applications are zone changes, changing from commercial to industrial and to zoning, and the other application is a vacation of the street of Reese in that area so they can assemble all the parcels and come in with some more big box, big box industrial tenants, and we're excited to move forward. So I'm here to answer any questions that any of you may have on these three items.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or questions to Mr. Gronauer concerning item 16? None?
Yes, Mayor.
Sorry, Isaac.
Yes, I think, I agree with what Mr. Gronauer has presented here as he represents Van Trust. Of course, Van Trust has been at the forefront of much of the development, of the industrial development that has begun to shift our economic success, I think, and diversify our economy here in the northern part of the valley, and in particular, of course, in North Las Vegas. And of course, there is undisclosed as to what we have coming up maybe in this area, but I think that if history holds true, which I'm sure it will, this will be yet another good, non-gaming-related industry that will be coming into North Las Vegas that will help us to, again, diversify our base and provide employment that will be socially needed as we recover here in '21. And with that, I'd like to make, and these comments, of course, will also hold true with the other related items. And I, with that, I will make a very wholehearted motion to approve.
Okay, I'll open up a public hearing real quick. Do we have anybody on the line, Catherine, interested?
Mayor, we have no callers on the line, but we did receive three public hearing notices in support of this project and zero in opposition.
Thank you very much. So we will, we will close the public hearing, and Councilman, your motion stands. Any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, cast your vote. Items approved.
Mayor, council, item 17, approve ZN 19, 2020, and pass and adopt ordinance 3054 in ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 14.41 plus or minus acres from an OL open land district to an M2 general industrial district, ZN 19, 2020 Tropical Four for property generally located at the northeast corner of Tropical Parkway and Castleberry Lane and providing for other matters of property related there, too.
Thank you. With the presentation heard, we'll open the public comment. Madam City Clerk, anybody on the phone for item 17?
Mayor, we do not have any callers. Again, we had public hearing notices returned, three in support and zero in opposition.
Thank you very much. We'll close the public hearing. The chair will take a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I think we have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Mayor, council, item 18, approve VAC 10, 2020 Tropical Four for applicant Van Trust Estate to vacate Reese Lane between Castleberry Lane and Nikle Way.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing again once more, Catherine. Anybody for item 18?
We have no callers on the line, but we did receive two in support and zero in opposition, public hearing notices.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. The chair will take a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Presenting room, cast your vote. Items approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mayor, council, item 19, approve WAV 03, 2020 Scott Robinson Apartments for applicant SRB Leaving LLC to request a waiver in an R3 multifamily residential district to allow for 685 parking spaces where 803 parking spaces are required, located at the northwest corner of Corley Avenue and Scott Robinson Boulevard.
Thank you very much. Do we have a presentation, Catherine, from someone?
Mayor Lee, yes. Mr. Gronauer, I'll join him back to the conference again.
Okay.
Caller, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Your Honor, members of the council, again, this is Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I am here representing the owner and developer of this piece of property. As you guys are very familiar with this piece of property, I've come in over the last several months in different development phases with respect to developing this property. It's an infill piece of property. It's located behind the Super Walmart. It's off of Craig Road, and it's also nearby Martin Luther King. With respect to the development itself, it's about an 18-acre piece of property. It is for Class A apartments on the infill that we're proposing. With that being said, we've been working very closely with your staff. They are recommending approval of the request that is before you. One of the things that is a compelling justification for the proposed request is that we've increased the open space, and within our open space, we don't have your typical amenities that you typically see in an apartment complex. We've gone above and beyond, where in this complex itself, we have options for a basketball court slash a four-man soccer field. We have fire pits, putting greens, potlot areas, pools, and clubhouse with full of other amenities within. We're very excited about moving forward with this development, and your staff has reviewed everything as we work very closely with them, and they are recommending approval. Your Planning Commission had recommended unanimous approval for the project also. Your planning commission had recommended unanimous approval for the project also, and I am here to answer any questions that you may have with the project itself.
Thank you. I'm going to open up a public hearing on this real quick. Is there anybody on the phone for public hearing?
Mayor Lee, there's no one on the phone. We received one public hearing notice in support and two in opposition to this, and at the first public forum, I mentioned Mr. Richard Modi's letter that we received in opposition to this particular project.
Yes, we have that letter. We'll enter it to the exhibits here. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask Councilwoman Goyens Brown to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had a couple neighborhood meetings on this project in the past, and at the time, there was no one in opposition of the development. I am in support of the development. That infill piece has been vacant for longer than I can remember, for decades. The open space is a great amenity. It is a contained enclosed complex, and as far as parking, as you recall, last meeting, we did discuss that with Mark, and you will find nowadays that many people have one car, a single car, or no car at all. They rely on Uber, Lyft. There's also public transportation line there, so just hoping that parking will not become an issue, but I do not think it will. So, with that saying, if there are no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? If not, move forward. Seeing none, we have a motion. Oh, excuse me, Isaac.
Exactly, Mayor. What I'd like to do is just follow up on the councilman's comment. Hey, with a lot of the newer generation, a lot less of them actually drive than our generation, let's say, right? The Gen better than the, they don't own as many cars as we do, so I think in the future, we might want to actually revisit parking requirements. I just think I would put that out there. But, yes, I think I agree with the councilwoman.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Do I need to repeat the motion? Are we good?
No, your motion's still good.
Okay.
So, please cast your vote.
We're on, aye?
Items approved.
Thank you very much, and everybody stay safe and well, and I'll talk to you soon. Take care.
Good luck.
Mayor, counsel, item twenty, approve WAV oh-four twenty twenty Rome South for applicant Hand Property Holding Company to request a waiver in an R-four high-density residential district and a C-one neighborhood commercial district, propose property reclassification to an R-four high-density residential district, to allow two hundred and twenty-five parking spaces where four hundred and forty parking spaces are required, to allow six-foot-wide side and rear landscape buffers where the minimum of a ten-foot-wide landscape buffer is required, and to provide trees at forty-foot on center where twenty-foot on center is required, located south of Rome Boulevard and approximately two hundred and seventy feet west of North Fifth Street. If I may, real quickly, this is for a senior apartment complex.
Oh, that helps. Yeah. Well, great. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody on the line that'd like to make a presentation on this?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I will bring it in with just one moment.
Thank you.
Hello, caller, state your name and address for the record.
Bob Feivelman, two ninety-five East Warm Springs.
Welcome, Bob. Go ahead and give your presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Bob Feivelman, representing Nevada Hand. We appreciate staff's help with this new affordable senior community, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
That's your presentation?
Well, we're, for the sake of time, I wasn't going to make a long presentation, but we're asking for a reduction in parking, and to support our request, we've surveyed all of our properties and find that this number should be sufficient for this development.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, do we have any of it in the line for this?
Mayor, we do not.
Thank you. Councilman Churchill. I have closed the public hearing. Go ahead, Richard.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm familiar with this project over here. I don't live far from it, and it's really in an area over there that requires higher density, as a senior area right off of North Fifth, just south of Rome. The other project that Nevada Hand has provided us over there apparently is doing well, so I don't see any reason why we should have a concern with this particular project going in. So, with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and approve item number twenty.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion. Please cast your vote.
We're on, aye?
Items approved. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you very much. See you soon.
Mayor, counsel, item twenty-one, approve ZN eighteen twenty twenty and pass and adopt ordinance number thirty fifty-two in ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately twelve point four-three plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from a C-two general commercial district to an RCL, single-family compact lot residential district, ZN eighteen twenty twenty Garland Grove for property located east of Clayton Street, approximately five hundred and eighty feet north of Craig Road, and providing for other matters property related there, too.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody on the line that would like to speak to this?
Mayor Lee, we do, and I'll bring them in. Hello, caller, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive, here, well, I guess I'm not there, here on the phone, tonight, representing Richmond American Homes. We appreciate staff recommending approval of this application. We did have a neighborhood meeting, and no one attended, and at the planning commission, it was recommended for approval, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone on the line for, I'm opening the public hearing?
We have no callers, no written comment.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or questions on this? And Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. I had an opportunity a while back to look at this project in Henderson, and this area over here is just adjacent to, if you want to get a physical sense of where it is, it'll be along Craig Road, just a bit east of Clayton, where Murphy Oil is over there, but the area in question and the project going in there, I was really quite surprised and pleased when I saw what it would look like, when I did see what it looked like in Henderson and having that project over here so close to, you know, the corridor or the Craig Road corridor there. So, I think this will work very well for our community and for our residents over there, so with that, I'll be more than happy to make a motion to approve item number twenty-one.
Thank you. Counsel, any more comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion. Please cast your vote.
We're on, aye? And happy twenty-one.
I was approved.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, items approved.
Mayor, counsel.
Thank you very much.
Oh, okay.
Mayor, counsel, item twenty-two, approve ZOA oh-three twenty twenty and pass and adopt ordinance number thirty forty-eight, amending Title seventeen of the municipal code related to zoning, ZOA oh-three twenty twenty, by amending various provisions, including but not limited to procedures, permitted uses, parking, and definitions, and providing for other matters property related there, too.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody on the line for item twenty-two?
Mayor, we do not, and no written comments either.
So, no public comment? We will close the public comment, and Counsel, any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Mayor Lee, I'd like to make a motion to pass and adopt ordinance number thirty forty-eight.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to business.
Note, item twenty-three was moved to the consent agenda earlier tonight and authorized by council.
Okay, moving on to, oh, pardon me, twenty-four.
Item twenty-four, update on acceptance of the grant award from Clark County, an amount of twenty-three million, seven hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars for Corona relief funds, and authorize the city manager and his designated to continue to enter into appropriate agreements. Mayor and council, as you're aware, we received these monies, the CARES dollars, from Clark County. That was after being left out by the state's allocation of dollars. These dollars originally in the CARES bill were intended to be spent by December thirtieth of twenty twenty. A few weeks before that deadline, the federal government, Congress, extended the deadline until December of this year. So, prior to that, we had our use of the funds, we were using them really as quickly as we could. Some of the demand for the funds for some of the rental assistance programs and things like that were less than what we'd anticipated. We then took some of these dollars, is Alfredo here? Alfredo has some of the specifics, but I think it was a little over ten million of these dollars that were unspent at that time, and we put them into the budget at that time using the language of treasury for substantially connected employee salaries that were permissible at the time. At that time, when we did that, we talked about the fact that we intended to still use these relief dollars or still provide projects for the city despite the fact that the relief dollars were expiring in December. We knew that the coronavirus didn't know that and wasn't going to stop wreaking havoc on our community, and so we were glad that Congress extended this. This provides a lot of clarity for our residents and for employees and for these programs. We will be bringing back to council our staff's recommendations of how to spend, Alfredo's at ten point four? Okay, nine point five is what's left in those funds, and we're continually using them for relief-related dollars. We believe that that was the intent of these federal dollars. It was a scramble that all governments at all levels did. If you recall, the state, they took two hundred and seven million dollars that they had left, and they put that into their budget. Considering the fact that we have not received the full allocation of CARES dollars from the state, we have also been urging the state to take that two hundred and four, two hundred and seven million dollars back out of their budget and use it for relief for our small businesses and for our community and for vaccinations and things like that, like it was intended to be used. It wasn't intended to balance your budget. So, we will be bringing back to council in the next couple meetings, our proposal of how we intend to use these dollars from now until the end of the year. I want to really applaud staff and mayor and council for your direction in having us use these dollars for their intended purposes. I believe it's made a difference. I think that it's a very appropriate way to look at the city's finances, to make sure that we are shoring up our tax base and doing all that we can to protect that, because that's, small businesses are the lifeblood of not just North Las Vegas, but really of the country, and that's what these dollars were intended to, for. Now, as we see, because the prudent nature that these tax dollars were used, it allowed Chief Calhoun and his team to stand up a vaccine program that really is being modeled other places. I talked to Councilman Black today, and he had made the comment about how, as chair of the Health District, he's gone to some of the different vaccine sites, just how well-run ours is and how efficient and effective it is, and that's really because our team had the, these dollars that they were able to deploy and use to make sure that we're doing all that we can to quickly vaccinate our residents, because, you know, a lot of people can give lip service when it comes to vaccination, and they can blame the nature of the vaccine being frozen, they can blame the federal government. The reality is, is we knew that we had a number of vaccines that were in the state bank, and everyone wants to talk about getting the state back open. The only way you can open the state back is when you get people vaccinated on a wide scale, so that we can get back to as normal of a life as we can have after this pandemic has receded. So, once again, those efforts to do that, to put together a plan, were really made possible by the fact that staff recognized and knew that through your leadership, we had these dollars and we could go out and do right in the community, and that's been a very, it's been a blessing really for our residents, I believe. So, that's, I don't know if there's any questions on it, but we will bring back at another time what we'll do with the remainder of those dollars. We've talked to the county and let them know some of our plans and when we need to get it kind of zeroed out for them. Really appreciate their leadership and their assistance in recognizing how important it was to get these dollars into local government's hands so that we could lift up our community.
Thank you. Would it be, I want to make it appropriate that we invite Alfredo and Joe to come up for a second.
Yeah.
Would you gentlemen come up here? I know you're here for this items, and I know you're prepared, and I know there's probably some questions that are somewhat on our mind, but all the way up here, I just want to, I went out walking early this morning, and this lady was walking her dog, and I'm always surprised that people know that I'm the mayor, because I really don't go out and do much, you know, in the community, like with this coronavirus and everything. But came up, told me what a wonderful experience she had. She just went in there, made an appointment, got in, out, she doesn't know what all the problems are in the rest of the state, but just North Las Vegas. She goes, you just know it's going to be done right. And then I got an email today from someone who said the same thing, and I invited Alfredo Moleseor, Assistant City Manager, to come up and hand him this, because, you know, I mean, there's people forty years old that they should get the shots right now. And people have asked me, John, have you had the shot? No, I'm not old enough, and number two is, I don't want some senior person to be deprived of a shot that needs the shot. But the reason I asked you to come up, Alfredo, is maybe you could give us a quick moment of this, and then Joe, on your end, is we just going to use one station to do this, or do you see some other changes to what we're doing? But Alfredo, would you come forward just for a minute and maybe give us an idea of what your experience has been and what you see that we should continue or we should do?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, thank you, thank you so much. You know, one of the things that we've just been worried about for the past week and a half is to make sure that we serve the residents of North Las Vegas well, and that they have a website that works and they have an easy way to access the system. I think, you know, we really worked hard on that, and that's why a lot of the, we did, made appointments for like seven thousand people over the past week and the week moving forward, and one of the things we have is that we thought people were going to not be familiar with the process, but I've obviously been having a lot of very good experiences, and the chief has been, done a very good job relaying that to the staff about how there's been a positive experience by the fire department, and also helping our folks as we work through our call center and emails and maybe some confusion with some of the material that's been going out there and trying to clarify for the residents, you know, you have to be seventy and above to get vaccinated or a healthcare worker, and making sure that, you know, that there is, that there is going to be time for everybody to sign up and to eventually, you know, move forward with this process. So, it's been very, very positive. Currently, we have about fourteen thousand folks, seventy and above, who are pre-registered with us, so we're working hard on how we balance vaccine, receiving vaccine and actually scheduling those out, not maybe get too over our skis in that fashion. So, it's been a very positive experience. We've had a lot of compliments and also been answering a lot of questions for residents. One of the things I guess I should tell you that we did was, the system is very good for people who have emails and internet access, but if you're not familiar with those or maybe you don't have access, we did develop a call center, and one of the things we did was, one of the first things we did, we started to roll it out, is to make sure we reach out to folks who don't have email and are not able to receive that link, even though all of our materials talked about how we should help, how we should help maybe our neighbors and friends get access and help them work through that system or help our parents in that regard. We've done an outreach to folks who didn't have emails and have been able to sign them up to try to reach out to the most vulnerable and keep them part of the process, and again, doing different events, pop-up events near senior facilities. And again, doing different events, pop-up events near senior facilities so that we can capture that, that, the, the smaller groups of, of people as well. So, and chief has really been the leader of all this and the team is very proud to be recognized. I, I asked everybody to send me a collection of those little compliments because, you know, it's been a rough week and we want to make sure the team is energized and that provides a lot of energy for them.
Oh, you've been a fantastic job. Joe, I know you've had the other side of this issue, you have the application process.
Yeah, so I just want to say, first of all, you know, I, I've been doing this job in general as a firefighter for over twenty years, almost twenty-five years and definitely blessed to, to be able to see what we're, you know, what I'm able to do and what my team and our, the departments that I've been involved with has been able to do for our community. And this is, in the last few weeks, it's just been a hundredfold in what we're able to do. Being in a room with four hundred people that were vaccinating and, and getting the positive energy and the thanks and the just, people have had a rough year and they see this as an opportunity to start living a normal life again. And, and I invite you all to come see not only our operation, but just see the people. They're not, they're not thankful for Joe Calhoun. They're thankful for the vaccine and they're thankful for the service that we're providing. And it's, it's everybody in this room that is part of providing that service and I just want to thank you for entrusting me to do that. So, so far, and, and, you know, this sounds great, so far as of this afternoon, we've, we vaccinated of one thousand four hundred and seventy-five people. And that's nothing compared to what we can do. We are prepared to move next week to a local high school that's centralized in the city by appointment only and start, we can bring in probably up to about fifteen hundred people a day. The, the process that we've created, we are able to bring in the volunteers that we've gotten. We have National Guard that we are acquiring for next week and we have school nurses that we're bringing in along with our firefighters who are able to provide the vaccines. And we're going to be able to double our operations and be able to get people through at that rate to get about fifteen hundred people a day. We're, we're going to start small next week. We're doing a thousand fifty, or appointments a day. And I, I see no reason that we're going to have long waits, long lines, because when people get there, the longest wait they have is the mandatory fifteen-minute wait after they get their vaccination. And we're really proud of that. We're really proud of, of how happy our residents are. And like Alfredo said, we are doing everything we can within the processes that we have. Again, we, we have to step back and remember, we're in the middle of a global pandemic. We're doing something that hasn't been done for decades. We've been talking about points of distribution for vaccines, but there are several things that are different though we, you know, when I started learning about pods a decade ago, it was one shot and done and they could walk away and you wouldn't have to deal with them. Now it's a shot and then schedule another one. So this is such a, a process that we've had to, to put in place and it's going well. And it's just a matter of working with the community to get the right people in at the right times and most importantly, to get the vaccines coming so that we're able to get them into the arms of our community. I had the pleasure today, like Alfredo said, we're not only going, you, you asked a question about one, one place. One place, originally, we were going to try and go to a couple of different high schools to try and hit different areas of, of the community. What we kind of stepped back from that and said is, because it's such an undertaking to try and have a facility to do fifteen hundred people a day, we're better off trying to centrally locate within the city and keep all of our equipment, all of our material there. The school is going to allow us to lock it up and, and, and we don't have to reproduce everything every single day. So that, that's ideal for us. What we are going to do is start going on the weekends to try and hit, especially now some of our senior communities. And we've made appointments in some areas like Sun City, Aliante, where we have a captive group of elderly folks that, that need the vaccine. And I had the privilege of going over to Rose Garden Senior Apartments today and they had a community meeting that they invited me to, to talk to their residents and they're, they're just, they can't wait to get the vaccine. And so we're going to do a Saturday where we go out and hit some of the senior apartments in that neighborhood as well. So, you know, we're trying to get all the areas of our community, we're trying to get the people that want those vaccines. You know, there's several questions about, well, am I going to be made to get the vaccine? Or, you know, no, we're, our job is to, to tell you what we know about the vaccine and if you want it, we're going to get it for you as, as quickly as possible. So it's going well and it will only continue to hopefully go better as long as we, we keep going in the path we're going now.
We are so proud of you. I really mean that. Counsel, do you have any comments or thoughts or ideas or questions you might have, these gentlemen? Richard?
Mayor, I, I, I don't have any questions, but I, you know, I can't but help continually at our meetings over here, which is like once every two weeks, to, to thank all of you. We just had our police department here the other day, it was yesterday, the mayor said something and Councilwoman Goines Brown, you know, was given an award for making a contribution to our police department. You know, I was down at, you know, the rec center at, at Bruce and Rancho High and I got my shot down there. I, I know and I appreciate the fact that you, you'll be going to Sun City on the twenty-third and the thirtieth and I was able to, you know, get volunteers and help over there. And I've never seen people, I mean, to be quite honest with you, be so happy about getting an injection, you know? So you could see the, the frame of mind that a lot of our seniors are in. But I could tell you that, you know, to, to work with yourself and Chief Anderson and Salome Barton the other day, it went very, very smoothly. You know, a little bit of a line outside, but with the volunteers you had over there, I, I think it went well and, and, and I can't, you know, I, I can't thank you all enough. I mean, the words just don't match the work that you're doing. But, you know, I, I have to add to what, you know, city manager, Mr. Jude, and said, you know, he thanks the council, but, you know, at the end of the day, it, it's really about all of the hard work that, that the city manager does together with our, our staff, together with our city attorney department. And it's not specific to our police or fire. You know, our, our other employees that get out there and with the emails that we get when we have streetlights out or we have problems in parks, it's our parks, people, you know, it's, it's a, it's a conglomeration of very, very dedicated people in North Las Vegas that, that just set the tone, you know, for the entire valley, that, 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 that make it a privilege for us to serve on a council, to be actually elected people by the people out there. And then once we are elected, to work together with staff that really, you know, the boots on the road, that make that happen, to say, okay, you put us over here, but now, now we want to do our job and give something back to you, particularly in the time of this pandemic and any other time, because everything is very important to the people out there. It could be a street light out, it could be a hole, it could be in a road, you know, all of those things are important and, you know, just a phone call away from having to work done it. All of you are just very, very amazing and I, and I like to, whenever I have the opportunity to, to make a statement like this with my colleagues over here, because we all feel the same way, just to say thank you on the record for what you do, you know, and what you'd be doing. So I'll probably see you, I volunteered for the, for the thirtieth and the twenty-third up there and I'll look forward to my second shot, which wasn't bad, you know? I think the Moderna, you know, vaccination works well, a little sore, but there's no problem. And I wish the people out there would really think about it and make that choice, it's their choice, but, you know, I, I think it's a good thing that you're doing and thank you so much.
Well spoken, Richard. Covered it all, but Councilman Bron, did you want to add something?
Uh, I, I think, yeah, I, I think that on this one, I, I think my colleagues have said it all. The only, the only thing I'd like to follow up on is, I feel like I'm very, I go to bed at night and I feel perfectly at rest knowing that we have such a great caliber of first responders, both in our fire department and of course in our police department, you know, safeguarding us in many different ways. There are different ways to be a hero. Sometimes you don't have to charge into a burning building, although I know, I, I've actually, you know, seen footage of our, of, of, of our fire department, the personnel charging into buildings, you know? I, I just, I just got an update that, you know, unfortunately, there was a homicide in our valley and I just saw, I, I'm praising our police, our detectives that have already made an arrest in that case. So, you know, there are different types of heroes, but sometimes the, the heroes, the best heroes that we have or heroes that are, are the ones that are able to organize relief efforts like this and, you know, have them be a model for the entire valley. If I had, if I was wearing a hat right now, I'd have to be off of them. So I, I, I think that's enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Black?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. You know, you look at the, the magnitude of what's before our community of over two million people with an interest level in the neighborhood of sixty to seventy percent and how to logistically make that occur in a reasonable amount of time, it's really a daunting task. And the Health District is the, the lead agency because they're the public health agency for Southern Nevada. However, they're relying heavily upon reliable partners such as the city of North Las Vegas to play a vital role in that comprehensive plan to give the vaccines in a safe and timely manner to those in our community that want it. And so I just am really grateful for our city team and the leadership of Chief Calhoun. You know, he said for ten years, he's been training for this and it shows because he's been, he's been unflappable, he's been steady and, and I saw with my own eyes their operation. And it was, it was, I hadn't been inside that rec center since I played racquetball in nineteen eighty-seven and I had flashbacks walking in there and, and it was amazing just to see the seamless fluidity of your, of your, your setup there. And then I've received a few messages from an eighty-four-year-old resident, an eighty-seven year-old resident that have tremendous gratitude and the firefighters were so kind and so pleasant and, and the, the process was so smooth. And another resident reached out and had, had a double lung transplant three years ago and she was desperate to get the vaccine and was so thankful that she could go to the rec center and make an appointment. And then last night, on the, on the, the flip side of that, I sat with a friend from church, a close friend of mine, at eleven forty-five last night and I heard on speakerphone as the doctor at the hospital told him that his wife, they did everything that they could and she succumbed to her, her infection with COVID. And that's the other end of the spectrum. So it's, it's real and it's serious and, you know, the, the faster and more efficiently and more compassionately we can get this to the community, the better. And as a, as a resident, as a councilperson, as a person who works with the Health District, you know, I would implore the, the residents to, to look closely at this as, as, you know, and measure the risk factors and make their own decision, but also to be patient and to be understanding and be, and be, you know, kind and, and thoughtful with the process because it is a huge, huge undertaking. So thank you, chief, and thank you, Assistant Manager Moleseor.
Councilwoman?
And I just want to add my thanks to both of you and Chief Calhoun. I think I mentioned this before on a call or on a text message, I see you as the caretaker. I'm sure you've seen and gone through way more than any of us could either imagine. And so I want to say thank you again because I had a resident who called me that was having trouble getting registered or something, but we made it happen, well, you made it happen and city manager, thank you as well. So that's, that's just what we do here. But I just want to make sure that you're okay because, you know, we, we always praise what you do, but we don't know what you're, what it's like when you're not in front of the audience or you're in those down times. So I just want to make sure that you're okay and if you need something, please don't hesitate to reach out and just let us know. I need some time. Okay.
And just one question for me. We're at seventy years old now, is that right, Alfredo? Do you see a time and point that the next, whatever, or Ryan, whatever, the next level between fifty-five and seventy or what, do you know what that next level is or when you might expect to hit that?
Yeah, our next, our next levels in the lanes that have been set up by the state, we can concurrently do the general public by age and then we can also start doing frontline workers down the, down the lanes as well. And so the seventy and up group is what we're in right now in the general public and then sixty-five and seventy is next. And basically, when we'll start making those appointments, number one is working with the Health District. And then second of all, it's going to be based off of what our interest is in the system that we're using right now. So when we start to see that the interest is dropping off in the seventy and older group, then we're going to start using our interest list to start scheduling this next group of people. So the, the thing is, we don't have to get all seventy-year-olds in Las Vegas or the, in North Las Vegas or in Nevada. We just have to provide that opportunity and then as we start to see that, that, that interest wane, then we move on to our next groups. So we're still way, well in the middle of probably over ten thousand seventy-year-olds that are interested right now.
Councilman, you're the chairman of the Health District. Do you have anything else you want to add to the future?
No, I, I think, like I said, it's, it's a huge task and the Health District is counting on partners like us and other municipalities and organizations and healthcare providers. You know, they announced today that Dr. Legan and the state announced that the chain pharmacies are going to start offering the vaccine at the local pharmacies, first with Walgreens and Smiths Pharmacy in the communities for the seventy and older. So it's really an all hands-on-deck approach. Every partner, every participant, both on the provider side as well as on the resident side, need to participate and, and work together in order for this to go smoothly and, and efficiently. And we're, we're working with our partners at the state to try to make sure that we have the allocation to meet the demand within our community. We're, we're only as good as the supply that we have on hand and we're working closely with the Health District and the state to make sure that that's adequate. You know, chief and his team can have a block of, of appointments available, but if we don't have the, the materials to fulfill those appointments, then we have a deficient system. So we're working on balancing it all out and it's, it is a balancing act, but we're, we're doing it, so.
Councilman Goines Brown for a second time?
Chief or Councilman Black, people like casino workers or if you work in the food services or grocery stores, will those, what category will, will they be in and when will their turn come?
The, the group of people that we're in right now with different steps within this tier of public employees or public-facing employees right now are the critical infrastructure staff that are out in the public every day. The next tier down is what the, and I can't remember the exact term that they have for them, but they're consumer-related frontline personnel. My guess would probably be with the rate that we're going at things, that we would hopefully be able to get to them in April. But we probably have a, a large group to go with a lot of our critical infrastructure staff, you know, things like mortuary staff that we've been working on as well, the rest of the healthcare workers and things like that. So, I mean, we're, we're definitely in for a marathon here, but I, I would venture to say, we're, we're hoping to get to those people in, in probably March, February, late February, early March.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Churchill?
No, I, I'm good. I don't have any questions.
Can I have a motion?
Okay.
The chair will take a motion.
Do you need to make a motion on this?
Yes, we're going to, the motion would be to authorize the city manager to enter the appropriate agreements.
I'll be happy to make a motion.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Bron, yeah?
Items approved.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-five, accept grant in the amount of seven point six million from the U.S. Department of Treasury under the Emergency Rental Assistance Program and authorize the city manager to designate to execute and grant award documents and enter into agreements with local administration of funding. Mayor and council, this is a, a new grant from Treasury. Rich Easter has been working closely with, with staff on what's the proper, proper way to go about, about this grant. One of the ways that, it's available to entities over two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand on this one?
Yeah, over two hundred thousand, there's, some of them are different numbers, but, and one of the, to maximize, we can apply directly for it in order to maximize dollars coming into Southern Nevada. The, the entities in Southern Nevada, Henderson, Las Vegas, North Las Vegas and Clark County have all applied for these dollars in order to, to increase the amount of dollars that come to Southern Nevada. One of the things that is kind of unique about this is Clark County has effectively, they have contracted with a third party that's administering this program for them. That's resulted in their ability to push more dollars down into the community. With that contract, there's over a hundred people that, that they have that are working with this. One of the things that was brought up in the policy, our policy, regional policy discussions was how the entities were going to, to deal with these funds. It became very clear to me after talking with Yolanda and other city managers that Clark County's ability to administer this program, they could administer it way more effectively and in a cost-saving way that we could. We would actually have ended up looking for a third party similar to theirs, but through, we believe that joining together with Clark County and the other entities in Southern Nevada, that we'll be able to maximize the amount of dollars that go into this. I'm not sure as of right now where the city of Las Vegas is, but I know Henderson and North Las Vegas have, we've committed to county that with these, this, these grant proceeds, we will let the third party that Clark County has contracted with to administer the programs. It's just to, there's no need to go out and do this on your own, whenever you can maximize. The whole point is push as much dollars, many dollars as you can down into the community. But sometimes you have this challenge in government, we're seeing it now with, with C. We're seeing it now with, with C C S D where sometime, times government can lose their way and they think that it, their role is to hire adults when in reality, we don't need to have more people on staff in order to administer a program. We need to make sure that the dollars get into the relief in the community so that people can, can get back on their feet. And so we believe that that's the, the most prudent way to, to use these funds is to have them administered by a third party through Clark County. I don't know if there's any questions.
City Manager, I do have a question. 7.6 million would be coming, would it be earmarked, that 7.6 million for North Las Vegas recipients? And then everybody would have their own category?
That is correct.
And then the other thing is, would it, does it go to the rentee or the, the property owner?
Um, so same as before, there are, now this is a very different program. This is one of these programs where like award recipients have to designate on the form that they'll wear their safety belts. It's the federal government, don't ask, but in order to get rental assistance, apparently you have to make a declaration that you will wear your safety belt. So there is a lot of, it's, it's a, it's a government program with a lot of little things that they've kind of thrown into this and we're still understanding more about it, but the, the point is, is it'll be rental assistance, just it'll have, I don't want to say strings attached because that's not much of a string, but there is some more.
Responsibility.
There is, there's more to, there's more meat on the bones for this plan. Because Congress, you know, they had more time to think, which sometimes I, I think Mark Twain would say that's a bad idea, but they had more time to think about it and they plugged more stuff into it instead of just a blanket dollars like they pushed out in the, the original allocation of CARES dollars in, in March.
Oh, that's interesting. Council, any, do you have any questions on this? Councilman Bron, do you have any questions? Sing.
Uh, no.
Oh. Councilman, did you have something to offer?
No, no, not at all. I, um, when it gets to these technical matters and money matters, of course, you know, I, I, I think we have pretty good people, you know, that are on this. So yeah, I, I agree with the City Manager.
Okay. So the Chair's going to ask for a motion. It's going to be worded and I'll say it, to accept the grants and authorize the City Manager to execute documents and agreements. So we have a motion for that?
I'd like to make a motion to say what you just said.
Yes, that's good. Thank you very much. We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Bron, yes.
Items approved.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item number 26, discussion on the creation of a community diversion court to increase rehabilitation and reduce recidivism in the City of North Las Vegas and an update about the progress for opening the Community Court Division. I know that Cindy's here, I don't know if she has any comments or anything. We've been, this is kind of a, we're going to be talking about the Community Court over the next two council meetings because as, as you, as noted earlier, item 27 has been moved to the next council meeting, which is the ordinance that creates the court. And Michaela, I don't know if she has any comments on 27? No.
Ms. Marshall, did you have any, I know you're here monitoring, but did you have any questions or comments that you wanted to bring to the council?
Okay.
Very nice to have her here.
It is. Yeah, this has been, and I know Delon's here too, they've had some meetings over the week. So just as far as an update, one of the, the primary things that, that I wanted to, to discuss with council and receive some direction on this evening was we, we, I think we're moving in the right direction. I think that, that the court and their team is moving in the right direction as far as putting together kind of the meat, if you will, or I want to say the meat, more of the bones, the skeleton of what the, the court's going to look at. I know they're really focusing on a lot of the technical things, recognizing that there's going to be a judge and the judge is going to have his or her views on, on how the program should be run. I have met with, with Judge Hoffman and one of the questions that, that we had and we had, and I had it for also Administrator Marshall is what, how do we, what's the selection process for the judge and how, how does that look? There's a, there's not a whole lot of people that would meet the qualifications within the City of North Las Vegas. So we kind of had, already have an idea. I know that, that many of you have been contacted by individuals that are, that are, I've been contacted by individuals. And so one of the recommendations from staff is that the process for selecting a judge should just be in a, a simple appointment from council that because of the, the, not a high volume, there's not as much need to have an, an interview selection committee or there's, there's a lot of different ways that this could look. But one of the, one of the recommendations, and I wasn't sure, and when Cindy sent it to me, I said, yeah, I, I totally see that, that we will bring some, some names to you all and then as the charter says, you are the appointing authority, but we think that's probably the easiest way to do it, quickest way to do it. And recognizing that this is a, there's some, there's some special, I want to say requirements, but there, there, there's a certain qualifications that are necessary for this and it's not, it doesn't lend itself to a very large applicant pool. So that's kind of, I don't know if there's any questions that council has on that, but it's our recommendation that the process will be is we will put an item on the, the next council agenda or the following council agenda with the, with a judge to be named to, to fill this vacancy that will be created once you create the court, if that makes sense.
So the question I have is, starting something from scratch and teaching someone how to start, it's one thing, experience is the second thing. We want to start immediately on this. How long will it take if we get a judge who has experience to actually implement the programs?
It's a, it's a good question. I think our goal from staff, as I mentioned in the last meeting, is to have this court in place by March 1st. Now that doesn't mean that the, the judge will be, I, I think it's, I think we have a unique opportunity here to have the, the court functioning as it is now, which is functioning well as a court, to, to create this department, have a, a judge in place on March 1st, but then give that judge the opportunity to put meat on the bones that staff is creating right now. Give that, the judge the opportunity to, to connect with the stakeholders that are necessary, work with staff to, to, to get their advice and counsel and really build out, build out a court. It's, it's before you have to hit the, hit the ground running. It's just like the planning process for anything else that we do. It's great to have a little bit of that time to, I think about when you go to, when you, when you go to college. You don't, you might declare a major right away, but you actually have some time and you have these things called general electives that kind of let you see and test, done a bunch of different things before you, you have to give a hard, this is what I'm going to do. We want to give some of that freedom and time for the court. I don't know if it'll take a couple of weeks, if it'll take a couple of months, within reason to, to build a court, come back, work with council and talk about their vision and make sure that the priorities of council, that's one of the things I heard loud and clear last meeting, make sure that, that, that the vision of creating this court is actually being implemented and then hit the ground.
Well, let me, let me, let me narrow it a little bit.
Yes, sir.
I've had a meeting with Mike Kelly the other day and Richard did also. We kind of built the Veterans Court because North Las Vegas has so many retirees and veterans in the VA Hospital and yet they still have suicide, they still have alcoholism, they still have those issues, but it is the most prepared organization to step in and to recognize rather than, okay, let's start with suicide first or, I mean, would we be starting with something like veterans that will accomplish two or three of those things or what's your thoughts on that?
That is, that is actually a, a great point. By getting a judge in place with, 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 which staff's goal has been March 1st and then giving that judge the opportunity to meet with stakeholders such as the, is it the Democratic Veterans, Veterans and Democrats? With that group and other groups to talk about what they've seen of, that's worked in the valley or other places they're from. That's one of the great advantages we actually have in Southern Nevada that often is not tapped into is we have a lot of transplants that have been in other communities that a lot of them, they're retired and so they spent a lot of time in other communities before they came to our community. And that's a wealth of knowledge and, and value that we can have and it's, it lends itself sometimes in parts of government to great ideas and we want to tap into that and give, give this process the opportunity to tap into that, those stakeholders, those conversations, also having conversations with, with you all before we, we run out with, with, and start building, if you will, the court.
Well, we had this meeting, which we thought was very informative and I've asked Richard for the council's sake, he does vets and pets and we all have specialties, if he would be a subcommittee one and kind of take a look at what potentially we could do. I see Delon, did you want to come up and say something, Delon? I just saw you walk up, but then Richard had, you know.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a logistical addition. My understanding, Cindy and Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, but the court is booked out through mid-April and so we will have to adjust for the current court calendar. So I'm thinking mid to late April for actual implementation.
Okay, well, that's, that's fair then if it's booked out.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And the mayor is correct, we had an opportunity to meet with, with Mike Kelly who brought some material with him and took some time to explain, you know, how the, how the process and the, the, the plan would work and it, it sounded, and I was reading it over last night and I was just reading it over again before I came downstairs here. And I did make a couple of copies and Delon should have one, I gave one to Rebecca and I mentioned, I even got one for Michaela to look at because it's going to have to be a joint decision. But you know, you know, these are people that, that are very interested in serving their community, not, not just people that live in North Las Vegas because they have an address here, but you know, they serve the, the community, they serve the veterans well, whether they're in a program or not, they have that passion, they have that love. So while that would only be one component, you know, to, to the diversionary court, it, it's an important one, as the mayor mentioned, with all of our veterans here and the need, you know, we, we probably should have had, if not should have had, a Veterans Court here many years ago, but this is our opportunity right now. It's a golden opportunity to have someone appointed to that position that has the background experience, the knowledge and the passion to, to work not only with the veterans, but the, the other issues that the diversionary court would entail, but also understands, and I'll put this in there for myself, the importance of working with the city, you know, as a partner in this, because we are partners. And I think I mentioned it at the last council meeting, we're all very well aware of, you know, the separation, you know, of, of the court and, and the executive side over here, but there has to be that connection in, in serving the public and serving the people on both sides. And I feel very good about what we've been talking about. So I look forward to working with, with the court and the good work that you do over there and of course with staff over here. So I think we're on the right track. And I almost wanted to say something and I'll digress for a second, second. You know, how odd it was today that in North Las Vegas, we, we proclaimed January 20th as Gay and Shof Day in North Las Vegas. And, and here, the inauguration, they, they tried to, you know, steal the, you know, the thunder from us over here and have the inauguration in, in Washington, but, but we beat them over here, we got it over here.
So I'll ask one other question. This was information only tonight, so there's no vote needed on this particular item.
That is correct. I would like direction as far as if, if you all are in, in agreement or just your thoughts.
Okay, so on this, I'm going to close, I'm going to close 26 real quick here and then ask you about 27, is that okay?
Uh, 27 is moved to the next one.
Right, I was going to ask you a question about, does anybody have any other questions for anybody at this moment? Okay, so we will close the hearing on this. On item 27, on introduction only, what is the plan with that now?
So the plan with that is to bring it back to the, the next council meeting, but there's just some, some small tweaks that we need to make in it. And at that time, I'd like to be able to, to also just for time, timing of what, what we're doing is if it's the desire of council, and I, and I've heard this from, from many of you in briefings, but just wanted to talk in, in an open forum about it, that we will also next council meeting bring forward a name for, for judge for consideration. And then we have, so it'll really just be a first read of the ordinance next council meeting and then the following council meeting, we'll do a, a presentation at that time. Hopefully we'll have a, a judge that'll, that'll be selected. We'll do a presentation of where we're at and where we're moving. You know, Cindy and Aaron know this, they know it well. They're, they're really helping inform our team and, and helping to, this is going really quick and, and in a good way too. Sometimes you can be quick and sloppy, this is quick and good.
It's been seven years, it hasn't been that quick, you know, since we've been digging out of the hole, but this is exciting, there's no doubt about it. So with that, item 27 has been moved for two weeks and we're going to move on to ordinances introduction only.
Item number 28, as you know, yeah, item 28, introduce ordinance number 36-1, authorizing issuance of the City of North Las Vegas, Nevada and its general obligation limited tax refunding bond, refunding bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues, series 2021, ratifying action taken by city officers toward the issuance of such bonds and providing other matters related there, relating there too. Citywide set for action on February 3rd, 2021.
Thank you. Moving on to City Managers' Report.
Mayor and Council, I don't really have anything to add to what's been discussed tonight. I do want to thank staff, especially Chief Calhoun for his efforts with the vaccinations. This is, as you all properly identify, this is a very big issue. This is the, where we start to turn the, the corner and, and what's going on. It's something that's necessary for everything for, you know, we're in the middle of a, of not just a pandemic, but we're in the middle of a state pause. I think we have 23 days left in the current pause of businesses and we're regularly contacted by businesses. I know you all are too. It's, we're reminded daily as some of our businesses close up, they, they just can't do it anymore. There, there was one today that, that said, we tried as long as we could and we've, we've, we have to close our doors. Their efforts to, to vaccinate, their efforts to build, build out a system that can, can quickly vaccinate is, is, it's impressive and it, it goes to Chief Calhoun's leadership and his team's core competency of, of dealing with this, that it's been able to be a model, not just for our city, but for, for other cities too. So I just want to thank them and we, we can just pound through this, get through this. There's, I know there's issues at the federal level with the number of vaccines that can come, but we also know we've got them in reserve in the state and we're going to make sure that we're getting the, as the, as the chief likes, likes to say, get them in, in people's arms and get moving. So I just want to thank them and thank staff for their continued efforts as we navigate through this. I'm not sure how many, how much longer, I asked the question before this meeting, how much longer we'll have meetings like this. We've talked about this as a policy group, we've talked about it as far as we're really two weeks away from making, looking at assessment and determining if they're, if we need to, to change right away, because then we'll get through all the spikes and everything that was, that we anticipated. I mean, to, to, yesterday there were 71 Nevadans that, that died of, of COVID and it, it's very real, it's, it's a big challenge, we're not through it, no matter how tired we are of it, it doesn't just stop because of, of us being tired or some magic date that Congress creates on a calendar. So we'll keep moving through it, we'll keep being patient. I appreciate the patience of your all, you all and the, and the public, but we're, I think we're in a good spot and we'll keep moving forward. Thank you.
So this is City Managers' Report. Do you guys have any questions? These are different times, I don't know, but I'm going to throw out something here. Yes, you're right, but your economic redevelopment team is working very, very hard. We've had a lot of success. We're really doing huge things in that arena, we're diversifying the economy, we're not slowing down. Councilman Bron's area is just, I mean, Councilman Bron's area is just on fire. Houses are being built in all of your locations. I mean, the city is not just slumbering along with this pandemic, you know, we are forcing ourselves to get ahead. We have great expectations for this year with your leadership and the things that you've put in place. And so we're excited to tell you, we will get through this, as you mentioned, and we will come out on the other side and be better, a stronger team and city at that point in time. And you, you, you've identified some great leaders and built great leaders underneath here. built great leaders underneath you. We want to congratulate you for that. So I don't know, is there anything else anybody wants to talk on his report? No. We're going to close your report right now, and then we're going to, we'll move past the council's thoughts and move on to public forum. Is there anyone here, Catherine, on the phone that would like to speak to the?
Mayor, we have no written comments and no one on the phone.
Okay, then we will close the public forum. And this has been a very, very good meeting. Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned.